Good evening and welcome to the December 8th pre-meeting. Does the City Council have any questions for tonight's agenda? Okay, well, thank you. Let's start with the City Council reports. Councilor Zadi?
Thank you. I have a question related to the mental inspection program. So I had a few visitors to my office hours and they told me some disturbing updates and I would like some clarification from staff. So what they told me is that a lot of the, so this consolidation of the code enforcement with the inspection program, you know, how they're consolidating it into integrating staffs to cross train, the cross training that's happening. It involves having a uniform and a badge and also being tenant enforcement. So there, there was an ad hoc meeting that occurred last week or two weeks ago where they presented what kind of enforcement they'll be doing and a lot of those tenants, you know, knocking on their door, you know, some of these tenants are undocumented. So when they see a uniform, not even a real officer, because they're not real officers, but a badge to uniform officers, that creates a lot of anxiety. It's actually really, it's very, very inequitable. And it also wasn't the purpose of this enhancement of the mental inspection program to have tenant enforcement be part of it. So they can knock on your door and say, hey, you, you know, you're, you're you're too dirty or you're undocumented or whatever it is. They don't want that mix up with the actual purpose of our advancement of this program, which was to ensure landlords, the bad landlords are held accountable. So can staff clarify what's going on with this program and why this wasn't presented to us, that this would be a badge uniform situation and tenant enforcement? I know it's coming to us in January, right? It's coming to us in January?
Yes, it is. So we can include addressing this in our, in our work when we come, when we come back in and specifically address those questions.
You know, especially right now, we have a lot of concerns in the community on ICE and we don't want to give the false, a false impression that this is now some kind of pseudo shadow police force that's here to enforce anything that's not supposed to, so.
One, I can provide one point of clarification that the city does not get involved at all in any immigration-related enforcement in the city. Our police department doesn't, our code enforcement doesn't. So I can tell you that categorically this evening and that's very solid to pass back to anybody who has concerns. And then the other questions around uniforms and those kinds of things, changes to the program, we will go through and review in, in January.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Ha?
Yeah, that actually fits perfectly into my report. So on Thursday, I met with UNE and Graystar, which is the management company that was hired by the owner of Westbury Apartments. And that's one of the apartment complexes that, you know, began our interest in tenant rights because of the horrific conditions that so many of the tenants are in. And we met at one of the residence apartments. We made them aware of the conditions. And they said they didn't know and to be fair, council didn't know until they brought it to us either. Because they're not the, the management company that's like, they're not like the, who you go to to like pay your rent or get like things fixed. They're higher. They're between the apartment and who manages the apartment and the owner. And so they had a few items they thought that would be easy to take care of right away. Things like resident cars with parking permits being towed, but for some of the other items, they wanted to come up with a long-term plan. They also committed to staying in contact with UNE and the resident because she was the spokesperson for all of the people that we've heard from and more. And UNE also asked for another meeting with me next week and I agreed to that. I'll be getting more information about the purpose of that meeting soon.
Thank you. Councilor Island?
I attended the municipal quarterly breakfast for Jefferson County online. I don't know if anyone knew this, but I was listening and they talked a lot about RTD. And it's a concern because they're having financial difficulties. So they're taking all their money out of reserves. And they don't really have a plan as to what they're going to do when their reserves run out. So that's also concerning. They're proud that they're 90% on time with fast tracks. I don't think that's something to be gloriously happy about when countries in the world can do it 99.9% of the time. I mean, one out of 10 is not arriving on time. They were 60%, so I guess it's an improvement, but still not satisfactory in my opinion, but to each their own, I guess. Um, I went to election commission board meeting where we certified the election. Did find one number that was off and everything was good. Other than that, Covenant Living, I went to their Denver Brass Concert. They were very gracious. They were giving to the city for continuing to sponsor their event. I stopped in briefly at Faith Winters Memorial at the Butterfield Pavilion. Because I signed up to go to the lighting ceremony, so I sent a plant to her family and a card and unfortunately, they were at the same time, but I was glad I could go to the lighting ceremony. I also went to the one on Friday night for the historic Westminster. Great turnout for both. No wind, kind of cold, but not bad. And we had a great turnout for both, so. Good events always. That's all I have. Thank you.
Can I add a bit to that, too? So the Covenant Living Christmas concert? What they were, what they are fundraising for is their benevolent fund, which is, it's important for the public to, to understand this, that it's such a great service that they do where, you know, when you enter Covenant Living, the way to get in is quite expensive. You know, you usually have to shift and transfer your mortgage in to pay, but if you stay 20, 30, 40 years, your money will run out. Right? So the way it works is if someone's money runs out and they can't stay there anymore, what happens to that resident? So this benevolent fund is a way for them to supplement the, their ability to stay at the facility. So it's anonymous. The usage is anonymous. So you don't have the any kind of shame or anything like that to use it. But it's such a great service and they've raised for this all year. So that was a great learning for me that they have this and I'm, I hope that more senior living look into that model of making sure that their residents actually are able to live there for a long period of time, especially if they live longer than they expected to. So that was a great concert.
Thank you, Councilor Zadi. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Councilor Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On Tuesday, I went to the UNE event and they, we also heard at that event what Councilors Zadi and Ha were talking about with office concern around enforcement officers carrying a badge and a level of authority that may dissuade residents from allowing them to enter into facilities. So I would appreciate the work that is looking on that when that's brought to us in January. On Wednesday, I got to get up early and join the snowplow drivers for our first snow event of the year. And we, I went on a route with Brock showed me around the facilities and we talked about the routes and then I got to join Devin, who's one of the, the drivers on the streets team and drove his route for several hours along 104th and 112th. Learned all about how to plow, learned about the snow rodeo, learn about, you know, what it is like to work for the city at that level. And, you know, one of the things I was really impressed about was he didn't say these terms, but he described a very pleasant workplace culture where he had the opportunity to learn and grow in his role. He had supervisors who appreciated and respected him. And he had coworkers that he got along with very well. And so I really appreciated hearing that from him about how, you know, he enjoys working for the city and not just in his role, but he, you know, the city's workplace culture at that level was very good. He also talked about, you know, what, how will we provide our employees and the benefits and pay, which were competitive and, you know, even described several snowplow drivers that used to work for CDO that now work for the city because we, you know, we are competitive with pay and offer good benefits, which I think is great. And he did also talk about how the seats in the snowplow can get uncomfortable after 12 hours of working. Something to look into. And then Friday, I attended Senator Winters' memorial service at the state capitol. And Saturday, got to attend the tree lighting ceremony with the mayor and Councilor Ireland.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Well, it sounds like, because I wasn't able to make the Tuesday meeting with UNE due to work, but it sounds like we're all kind of individually meeting with UNE. I'm trying to set something up with them too. So I don't know. Councilor Ha, maybe you and I can coordinate or something too. I mean, if we're going to be hearing the same thing. But anyhow, just hopefully we can all come back and keep trying to gather the input and make some some clear sense out of what we can do next on that. The, I did get a question that was about transit over this week, which made me wonder if I could get some information on, and maybe just for all of council on the, what RTD is doing in the new year with respect to routes and I know that we've had, you know, some of the wagon road routes removed since COVID. I'm just kind of wondering if we're getting any service back. Yeah, I think all I saw was maybe something for Wadsworth. And so I'm just kind of curious to know how we're doing on that end. And then-
Are we due for a regular update from RTD? Do we get regular?
I don't think so. We can schedule one, the staff, two things. Staff can follow up with your question, Mayor Protem, get information from RTD to City Council on the routes heading into the year. And then we will talk with them about potentially coming in maybe in a study session environment with City Council and talking about what the transit, what their transit plans are. Councilor Ireland talked about Jefferson County managers meeting last, sorry, mayor and managers meeting last week. And RTD did present not a very positive outlook moving forward. I heard also, we heard that they were they were reserve funding their operations and that they were going to run out of, out of money. So I wouldn't, I would suggest we're probably not going to be seeing progressions in their routes, but I'll get the information from RTD and then we'll, we'll, we'll talk to them about whether they'd be wanting to come in and do a study session with us.
Thank you. It was something I was planning to bring up in our strategic meeting is more regular sessions with our stakeholders and partners. I know that some cities have at least an annual or bi-annual update study session with RTD. And so it seems like a good time to just bring that now.
Yeah, I'm just on that note with respect to just, I'm just checking in on the Front Range Front Range College? Wait, what?
Passage Road?
Passage Road? No, no, the col, no, I know, I know. That's what I want to say is Front Range Passage Road, but-
What, any challenge?
Front Range Community College, yes. And just make sure that the, the 31 bus route on federal is still serving the school. So I remember that they were looking into changing that up and we still have like a ton of students that utilize it. So just checking in on that because it was brought up as an issue and I just don't know where it ended up. And so there's that. And then, yes, Saturday, I, I did attend Faith Winters' celebration of life instead of the the lighting here. It's so, sorry I missed it, but just a loss for our community. So. All right, about it?
It is. Thank you. I have a long one. So thank you to the councilors who brought up the information from UNE. I too met with Councilor Johnson at their celebration this year and they had brought up what Councilor Zadi mentioned with the badges and the uniform. And so we'll obviously address that in study session in January and get more information. I attended the quarterly municipal breakfast as well, online. And they focused a lot on transit, which is fantastic. They focused on both micro and macro transit options that are happening in Jefferson County and focused on the metro vision that Dr. Cog has presented. And there was different information, like Jefferson County right now is focusing on electrifying their fleet, which was interesting information. And there was a lot more. City manager, I realize you were present as well. But I'm just grateful that they're focusing on transit, which is a pretty large issue for us right now. And perhaps collaborating on some of the micro forms such as e-bikes. They brought that up as well. I attended the Holiday Metro Mayor's Annual Reception and that was really lovely. So it was great to meet all the other newly elected mayors in the area. So that was great. Sure.
Sorry to interrupt. The e-bike thing, what did they say about that, the collaboration? What type of collaboration?
We're looking at what ordinances, because it looks like right now, today, we don't have ordinances around how those are managed. You know, where are you allowed to ride them on trails or on streets, et cetera. And so there's concerns we've heard even in our city from residents, right? I think we're all facing the same questions. And so if we go into policy around what's permitted, perhaps we can have standardized policy, right? So that it's not confusing from one city to another.
Okay, thanks.
Yes. But no timeline on that. I attended the Historic Christmas as well, Councilor Ireland. That was beautiful and very well attended. The children's choir did an excellent job. So just a big thank you to our Historic Society down there and all the folks and our fire department that helped put light up that tree. The holiday lighting here at the city, I think, was a fantastic success. So thank you to everyone who made that happen. I was there with Councilor Johnson and Councilor Ireland and it was extremely well attended. I noticed that we had vendors here this time. I don't know if we've done that before, but it was fantastic. And I talked to a lot of the vendors and made sure that we could make them happy and that they come back again. And so I'm just really grateful that we always seem to get a little tiny bit bigger. And I talked to a lot of the residents and they said the same thing. They were happy about the food trucks, the vendors, and it's always a little bit bigger. So thank you to all of staff who made that happen. And again, to our fire department for all that they do. And to our police at both events because they're working, they're standing out there in the cold with us. So thank you. And of course, because I was there, I could not attend the memorial for Senator Faith Winter. But I did attend the celebration of life on Friday. And I think we can all agree that her impact is outsized, honestly, than possibly, you know, any other elected I know. And especially in our community here in Westminster. And it was extremely impactful. I'm really grateful I got to go. And so I want the community to know that, you know, Councilor Zadi already made the suggestion to do a proclamation and I know that we intend to do that when the family is ready to do so sometime in the next new year. And we've also, you know, there's been suggestions to name an area of significance within our city for her. And so I think that's something that we could all consider. And I also acknowledge that we now just formalized our naming process. And so, you know, if folks have ideas around that, please bring them and we'll make sure that we make it happen and go through our PRL. And make sure we do that the proper way. But I think it would be significant for all of us to do it, so.
Question on that, Jody. The naming process, I remember it had a a route for council to directly. It would still go to the PRL board, but right, is that true that we can actually be the first step as well? So it's usually, it's like, you know, the community and then the board and then it comes to us, but there's a route for council to be-
What I'll do is I will send around to City Council the new naming, that the City Council adopted the naming procedure. The, the requests are routed through the Proslab Parks Recreation Open Space Library Advisory Board first. Kind of in a parallel to what we do with the Planning Commission and then City Council. So they would advise on a naming recommendation. Name can be advanced by a member of the community and can also be advanced by a member of City Council. And I'll clarify what, specifically your question as to whether if a City Council member or City Council recommends it, whether there's a faster way to move. I do believe they, they both go through-
It just notes that the naming authority is City Council ultimately.
The ultimate naming. So it does come to City Council. I believe in all cases it goes through Proslab, but I'll check that. And we'll get back to you on that.
Perfect. Any report for us here or?
No, I do have a very, very short report for the DIAS.
Perfect. Okay. In that case, then that concludes the pre-meeting. It is 6:49 and we will meet back at the DIAS at 7:00. I've, please stand and join in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for joining us. Please remember, our meetings are governed by the rules of decorum posted inside chamber doors. We ask all attendees to maintain a respectful environment. No disruptions, threats, or audible expressions of support or opposition are permitted. Signs and placards are prohibited and all attendees must remain seated in designated areas. If you wish to speak during public comment, please sign up in the lobby. Sign-up closes at 7:15. City clerk, will you please call roll call?
Mayor Carmelia.
Present.
Councillor Zadi.
Here.
Councillor Haat.
Present.
Councillor Ireland.
Here.
Councillor Johnson.
Present.
And Mayor Protem Romella.
Here.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Yeah. Oh. I move to approve the minutes from December 1st, 2025, special city council meetings as presented.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We will now move on to public comment. City clerk, would you call the first?
Yes, we received one email that has been attached to the packet for the public record and then we have six, oh, I'm sorry, eight people signed up to speak. The first speaker is Beth McBride.
I hope you all got, I hope you all got this wire. There's two pages, pictures and then some logos. On July, thank you, first of all, and welcome, and it's nice to see everyone. Thank you, council and mayor. On November 22nd, the Dog Park Guardians held their second annual paus-giving for pet food drive and we gave to the food banks and shelters. We were helped by so many. Our dog park community rallied around and started dropping off food at two local businesses. Cheese Tacos owner provided space for products and, you know, we had pet food as well as any supplies. Secondly, Front Range Gardens manager, David Siek, also provided boxes of food and supplies as well as food for people at food banks. On the morning of November 22nd, we were greeted by the truckload of about 1,500 pounds of dog food from Mountain States Toyota. General manager Sean Kramer and his staff provided that. He does have family connection with us, his mother's going to speak in a minute. They too contribute to food banks around the area, food banks of the Rockies. The Stanley Lake Rangers came out to help and set up traffic flow and make sure that everything is going to go all right. And that was Nate Matlock and Nate, I'm going to pronounce it, Arambio. Thanks to Petco manager, Mateo Martinez, and the management PetSmart for the carloads of food and supplies. Then the dog park community and neighbors in the general Westminster area, people came steadily. We posted on our website next door and we told neighbors, we filled another truck and several cars. We also had received phone calls about where people could drop off things or pick up things from their neighborhoods. Sometimes packages of supplies ended up at our front doors. In the end, we raised 4,646 pounds of food and carloads of supplies, which we gladly delivered to food banks and shelters. I want to say that I am proud and humbled by the generosity of the entire community. Finally, one of the side benefits of doing this was to meet the amazing volunteers at the food banks and shelters. And I would like to thank all who helped. And if we've forgotten anybody, I genuinely, I'm sorry, but we were overwhelmed with the generosity. So, thank you. And please check out the beautiful photos from photographer Susan Hart. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker? Test, test.
Hello, Mayor Carmelia, council and staff. I'm Tammy Kramer, one of the Westbury Dog Park Guardians. So, I just wanted to say a few things in addition to Beth's comments about the outpouring from the community to donate to our food drive. I posted our event on Nextdoor and my neighborhood Facebook page and the response was just remarkable. I made numerous pickups from people and had piles of pet food left on my front porch. From this, we discovered that we had reached a community far behind the dog park community. It was so very heartwarming to see all of the smiling faces of those who were donating as well as the volunteers receiving these truckloads of food. We encountered one little girl who walks her dogs, or walks dogs to earn money. She actually used her own money to purchase pet food to donate to our food drive. We distributed the 1,400, I'm sorry, 4,640 pounds of pet food to the Fish Food Pantries of Westminster and Bromfield, the Community Table Food Bank of Arbada, Foothills and Riverdale Animal Shelters, and the Almost Home Cat Shelter. It was a huge success and we did it all for the love of dogs and for the love of our dog park. So, thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ben Heller.
City council, my name is Ben Heller. I'm one of the applicants for the city council position. I usually watch the stream of this, but I thought I'd come in and just say hello. Pretty much everything you need to know about me is in the packet, but just a little bit extra, my background is in chemical engineering, work in tech as a software engineer now, and I think that I could add a lot to the city council with my background as a scientist, engineer, and lover of economics. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Melissa Gendy.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Melissa Gendy and I am also one of the applicants for the open position on Westminster City Council. I realize that my face may be new here, so I wanted to take this opportunity to come and present myself in person, to put a voice of the application. While I haven't been a regular in-person attendee, I do regularly stream meetings on YouTube, so I'm very familiar with the work that this council does. And I look forward to hopefully, hopefully having the opportunity to serve alongside you. And we'll keep this very brief and just say thank you so much for your consideration and thank you for all of your service to our community.
Thank you. The next speaker, the next speaker is Coleman Erickson.
Good evening, city council. Good evening, Mayor Carmelia and the rest of the staff. I've come to speak in favor of city council vacancy candidate Timothy Pei. I've come to know him recently through discussions about the Westminster community and what matters to our city. I'm currently running for the RTD Board of Directors in District J and Tim is also registered and that's how I know he's committed to supporting his community and being a representative. He has proven to me to be a proud resident of the city and a believer in improving our sense of community, our access to resources, and expanding the range of housing that keeps families close and communities strong. Tim is dedicated to listening and learning, things that I believe are a cornerstone of leading as a city councillor and what has made him a great candidate in the past. I have every faith in his ability to continue his career of service to the city of Westminster and urge each one of you to consider Tim for this vacancy position. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Here, I apologize, my computer went dark, so I need just a minute. The next speaker is Alan Farb.
Sometimes the city's transparency is well as clear as mud. And I ask you too, what's the cost of a human life? It was months ago in another cold season that I stood here before council to yet again decry the city's inhumane actions against its hundreds of unhoused women and men, even children, as it chose not to operate a life and limb-saving warming shelter until outside temperatures reached a frigid zero degrees. When I then stood at this podium and addressed this cruel action by the city and as to why, after the council had pushed to change that zero-degree threshold to something more humane in the range of 30 or 32 degrees, I recall councillor Haat during their comments also asking staff, why continued that zero-degree trigger to open a warming center when the councillor themselves thought council had already decided to raise the threshold to the more humane lifesaving temperature? I thought, as I now wrongly assume, city staff would actually follow council's directive. Slow forward to this past Thanksgiving holiday, when nighttime temperatures dropped into the twenties and teens, no warming center. And being Thanksgiving, limited to no services by the city, would be available for four days. Because you see homelessness apparently takes the weekend or maybe a four-day holiday off. And when this passed Wednesday, as the snow fell and the temperature fell, still no warming center to keep the vast majority of our unhoused residents dry and warm during the night. Does council know or do the residents know that besides this city not offering any warming center, until that life and limb-threatening zero degrees is reached, that even our caring staff at Irving Street Library in southwest Westminster are informing residents needing such shelter to go into Denver? That was the response I received the day before Thanksgiving holiday, when I asked whether library staff knew whether a warming center would be open. And this was just minutes after I left the MAC, just a block away from the library and which in the past has been used as a warming center, where I asked the same question, being told only a zero-degree threshold would trigger the opening of a warming center. And this past snowy Wednesday, my outreach partner was told as much when he asked. I've only three minutes to address you. Staff can take as much time as it needs to defend itself and rebut my comments without permitting me to rebut theirs. Staff can dazzle, even overwhelm this council and city residents with its pages and pages of documents and slick PowerPoint presentation slides demonstrating all it does for our homeless residents. But the blizzard of paperwork belies the realities facing the overwhelming number of our unhoused, especially during unforgiving. our unhoused, especially during unforgiving weather. So again, I ask you all, what's the cost of an unhoused human's life? Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tom Lambo.
Hello, everyone. Hello to Westminster. It's good to be back in front of you. I am Tom Lambo, here again to lift up Westminster in prayer. So please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, in Jesus's name, I lift up all of Westminster to you. I invite you here to be with us and to walk with us as we journey through life. We always want you to guide us in decisions we make. You are the God that nothing is impossible. Long ago, we separated ourselves from you. You knew we would turn our back on you, but your love never wavered. Isaiah 9:6 states, "For to us a child is born, to us a son is given, and the government shall be upon his shoulder. In his name shall be called Wonderful Councillor, Mighty God, Everlasting Father, Prince of Peace." You gave us everything, so we wouldn't be wandering through life without a purpose. You gave us everything, so we could be with you for eternity. You gave us everything, because love never escapes you. You're worthy of all our praise and adoration. It's a beautiful time of year, a time of joy and peace. We can get lost in the excess and lose sight of what really should be, what we really should be striving for. John 10:14 states, "I am the good shepherd, and I know my own, and my own know me." You are our shepherd. You know us, and we know you. We make choices and hope for the best, not knowing the outcome. Our choices can bring devastation to our lives. Come into our lives and keep us from choices that steal our joy and peace. Let us choose humility and be led by you, trusting you and your ways to bring joy and peace back into our lives. You are our God, and we are your people. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen. Thank you, guys. Have a nice night.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jim Fenimore. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council, Jody Barber, staff. Just want to thank you guys for having us up here, to be able to come and discuss things with you again. I met with Barbara and a team of the staff to work on some of the issues over off ADA, so I appreciate that, Barbara, putting that together. And Jody, thanks for directing that. Appreciate that, buddy. New council, looking forward to working with you. Glad to see kicking things off here, headed in forward progress, so appreciate that. Want to bring an update on the uplands, where I brought it to where the erosion control, the dirt control, dust, and things like that. They are making improvements over there, but there is a couple developers that have not done anything with their land that they're developing, as far as getting the controls for the dust. And then, you know, life's short, and so I myself just like to appreciate all the state of Westminster and the North Area has to offer to us, so we can have pleasant, comfortable lives. You just never know what is going to be brought before us. So with that being said, thanks for everything you guys do for us. Appreciate your time and efforts to work with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Craig Russell. Everybody get a copy?
I think that's one.
All right, welcome.
Thank you very much. I'll go quickly on this. If you look on page two, that's an email I received from the engagement team down there at the bottom, where it says, "Thank you for attending the public comment." But they, they said that there's nothing, no currently any action for staff to do. I've been asking for two and a half years for public engagement on having an advisory board put together to oversee the IPMC. I responded back to them, if you go up just a little bit there, that I think that the first thing is to get the stakeholders, tenants, and landlords together, seconds to review and discuss the code, thirds to draft any changes before moving it on to council, and fourth, to have an advisory board together for appeals of non-compliance. Obviously, we have the ad hoc people, we have the houses, and we have tenants that aren't too happy with that, but we have no advisory board. I've been asking for over two and a half years to put one together. We started one in 2024. So if you'll flip that over real quick, I start over next to that, where your advisory or your engagement team says, and I quote, "Feedback from both the original 2024 Rental Housing Committee and the current committee has consistently supported the adoption of the International Property Maintenance Code." I'm sorry, Engagement Team, that's a flat-out lie. There's no other way, there's no polite way to put it. It is a lie. First of all, none of this Engagement Team and none of the staff has been at any of the 2024 meetings. I have roll calls from, I can tell you who was there, and I can tell you what we talked about. So I have the itinerary for it. Furthermore, last month was the first time the IPMC code was handed out to anyone at an ad hoc meeting. Unfortunately, staff talked for 45 minutes and then said, "Oh, by the way, we've got this code, or do you have any questions on it?" Obviously, there were a couple questions that we tried to get to, but we ran out of time, because it's only an hour long. There's another ad hoc meeting this Wednesday, at four o'clock, on that to further, hopefully, move this along. But I wonder how you can have Engagement Team send me on the 26th of last month, "Do you guys need any help?", and then claim that they've been helping for the last two years? And they haven't been helping. This is being railroaded down our throats without any public input, without any landlords, without any tenants attending these, and actually looking through and advising. Again, an advisory board, I don't see why it would be too hard to put that together. We put together one on noxious weeds. That was, that was no problem. Staff voted for it, put together an advisory board. Why can't we do one for this? I've asked several times, several times, put together an advisory board that is consistent with having tenants and landlords on there, as opposed to just the staff and staff only. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the final speaker. Thank you. Thank you, speakers. City Manager Andrews, do we have a report this evening?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a very brief report this evening. If I could have the next slide, please? We're working on the next slide. It's coming.
Thank you, everyone, for your patience this evening.
All right, Mayor, thank you for your patience. Thanks, Ryan, for fixing that. Looks like a hardware problem this evening. I want to provide a, an update on the city council appointee process. So this is the process that city council is undertaking to fill the vacant city council position, when Mayor Carmelia was elected to mayor, vacating that one position. I can advise that 20 applications for the vacant council position have been received, and that the, there is an item on the agenda this evening for city council to discuss the next steps in filling that vacancy. To prepare for that, staff has set aside two blocks of time for council to consider. The first block is on Friday this week, December 12th, starting at 5:00 p.m. And then we've also blocked out time on Saturday, December 13th, if council deems that that's necessary. So that will be, you'll discuss that shortly this evening. And then if those dates work and the process proceeds, then we have set up for council to be in the position to swear in that new city councillor on Monday, December 15th, at the regular meeting of city council. Next slide, please. Here's a fun update, quite a transition, like the elf picture. There is the inaugural downtown Westminster Elf scavenger hunt. So for those of you looking for a little bit of Christmas fun with the family, you can explore downtown storefronts, hunt for that sneaky elf or more, and tackle festive challenges to win prizes. So more information is available with our partners at the Westminster Chamber of Commerce, and that's at westminsterchamber.biz. Next slide, please. All right, I'll run through tonight's agenda. I have one item for information-only in the packet, and that is the 2026 Legislative Policy Statement and Lobbying Protocol. So that's an information-only item, and it does prepare for discussion next Monday on that topic. Under two items of new business, the first reading of Councillor's Bill 54, that will amend the Westminster Municipal Code regarding electric vehicle charging stations. So this is a state deadline to amend our code to comply with the EV charging requirements. I can advise that we are already complying in all areas of the state requirements. So this is, in effect, a cleanup of the code to match what the city's already doing, and to achieve that compliance with the state. The next item is the selection of interviewees for vacant city council seats, so that's what I just described. So that's the second item of new business tonight. Next slide, please. This week, some things happening. December 9th, which is tomorrow night, Tuesday, there is a planning commission meeting, that's right here at City Hall, that begins at 7:00 p.m. On Wednesday, December 10th, this week, no inclusivity board this meeting, that's been canceled. And we do have a youth advisory panel meeting here at City Hall, and that begins at 6:00 p.m. On Thursday, December 11th, this is, I want to raise that City Hall will be closing early, and that's at four o'clock. And there is a staff function that requires staff to not be able to provide service at the front, so we're just being on the safe side. And City Hall will close at four. On Friday, December 12th, there's a special meeting for city council appointee interviews, as I described. That's a block of time set aside at 5:00 p.m. And then on Saturday, also a block of time set aside for a special meeting of city council. Next slide, please. Next week, next week's agenda and the city manager's report, I have one information-only item coming, and that's on the Laomong National Memorial at Westminster City Park Project. That's an update. There will be six items on consent agenda for council to consider under appointments and resignations. This will be, if it proceeds according to the plan, squaring in of a new city councillor. And then under old business and second readings, we have a second reading of Councillor's Bill 54, and that's an ordinance amending Title 11 of the code regarding EV charging stations. And then there will be an executive session that evening discussing the appointment of board and commission members. Next slide, please. As always, can reach out to the city through Access Westminster. That's the best way to do it. Get the mobile app, it's free, or give us a call during office hours, 303-658-2400. Our website, Westminsterco.gov. And we do have four social media platforms that we use, Facebook, Instagram, X, and Nextdoor. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions on tonight's agenda? Okay, city council comments? Councillor Ireland?
Thank you, everyone, that came out to speak tonight. I'm losing my voice, sorry. I want to know why Mr. Russell keeps showing up, just exasperated over not having advisory committee? How come we have not been able to have one of those with all the stakeholders, tenants, and landlords? Before they decide on the codes for international codes that's brought to us?
Thank you, Councillor Ireland. Mr. Russell is a valued stakeholder in our process. He is a member of the current newly constituted ad hoc advisory committee, and he does represent landlord's interests at, at the table. I can assure you that staff very much understand Mr. Russell's input and points, and do factor those in. I'm not sure, actually, I am sure that Mr. Russell's not in agreement with all of the things that we're working on, including the city's approach on the IPMC. But I can assure you that his voice is very heard at the table, and we make every effort to include and address his concerns.
Are there other landlords at the table?
Our Director of Community Services is in the room, and she is advising, yes, there are.
Who do we have at the table? That's what I want to know.
I'll ask Lindsay Kimball, our Director of Community Services, to speak.
And by the way, I'd like to come to the next meeting, so please let me know when it is and where it is.
Lindsay Kimball, Community Services Director. Thank you, Councillor Ireland. We'll be more than happy to examine an invitation to everyone on city council. It is open to all landlords in the entire city. We have mailing lists, because of course, they're all registered. So everyone is invited to that. We do have landlords, such as Sherman, Gray Star is attending, we have smaller landlords. We also have, getting a record, Foothills and Maker have attended and do continue to attend with us. So it's not an exclusive group. It's open to absolutely everyone, and the tenants are invited as well.
So is the meeting at four o'clock this Wednesday?
Yes.
Where is it at?
It is in the Colorado River Room.
The what?
The Colorado River Room.
Oh, wait. Okay, thank you.
Councillor Azadi?
Can staff clarify this warming sensor confusion?
Thank you for the question, Councillor Azadi. Deputy City Manager Barbara Opie will just pull that up and make sure that we provide the accurate information. There are two trigger, as, as she pulls that information up, there are two trigger points for activation. One is cold weather activation or severe weather, that's, that's one category, and then there's extreme weather activation. And I do believe our speaker tonight was talking about the extreme weather activation versus the cold weather activation. So there are two different temperature thresholds, one for cold weather activation, which was triggered in this past event cycle, and then one for the extreme weather activation, which was not triggered. I believe that's what the speaker was referring to.
Thank you very much. Sorry for that. The cold weather shelter, as it currently stands, is part of our emergency preparedness program with the fire department, and so they monitor the temperatures on an annual basis, and particularly in the cold weather time, and they identify when we're getting into those thresholds. The threshold is set at zero degrees to activate the MAC as an extreme cold weather shelter. It is intended to complement the work that is being done by the counties and that our navigators are doing. As it relates to when the temperatures drop to, when temperatures reach 32 degrees Fahrenheit or below with particip, and below with precipitation, rain or snow, or 20 degrees and below when dry. With that information, we work with the cold, both counties, the Cold Weather Activation Center. And so with that, we work with Adams County, which offers county-specific severe weather text alert options, other things of that nature, to reach out to those unhoused individuals, as well as our rangers and patrol officers. Our staff also works very much in concert with Adams County. Our staff also works very much in concert with Adams County and Jefferson County on those activations. With the newly executed IGA with Jefferson County, also allows us to tap into additional hotel vouchers through that program as well. So we had, we sent you this information a couple of days ago, we're happy to resend it if that would be helpful.
Okay, thank you for that. And related to pause giving, and thank you for all the work, guardians, for what you did there. And I wanted to bring this up, so there were a couple of events this last week, and I don't always talk about the events that I go to, but I go to a lot of events, and a lot of them are my own. But there are some particular city-sponsored events that I think need more highlighting, and I always try to bring that up when it's important. And the Historic Westminster Hometown Christmas, that was really important, that happened on Friday. It was a great environment, a lot of people were there. And I bring this up with pause giving because, as you all know, so every year I do a really big Westminster food drive. Last year, we did 8,000-plus pounds of food, and I worked with the guardians to, you know, there are people who wanted to give pet food, and we didn't really have a way of doing that, but the guardians had a way of helping and then supplementing that. And, and I believe that there are a lot of city-sponsored things, but particular communities and neighborhoods, like the Historic Westminster businesses, I talked to them about this on Friday night, because I didn't have my food drive this year. We're, we're going to start that up next year, and we want this to be a really, you know, really, really big one next year. So we're going to start early in the summer to plan it. And I want to make sure that all of these communities, so there's Historic Westminster, there's Covenant Living, so I went to the Covenant Living Christmas concert as well. There are a lot of organizations and communities in the city that are dying to get involved with something like a food drive, including the pet, a, a pet drive. So I think that there's opportunity for this, for the Westminster food drive next year, that we can all collaborate and make this a really, really, really big event. And I think we can help a lot of people who need the help, right? And that's, that's why, the bigger, the better, because the scale matters. And I think there's opportunity for not just pet food, but all kinds of food and even gifts. And, you know, there's a lot of stuff we can do to continuously improve this annual food drive. So thank you for what you do there. And thank you Historic Westminster and Covenant Living for the communities that you have built as well. You know, I think we can integrate better with our neighborhoods, with city council and the neighborhoods, and how we interact with them, not just HOAs, but there's a lot of opportunity to work better together and highlight the communities that need the highlighting. So I wanted to bring those up. Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you to everybody who came in, and I definitely appreciate hearing that the cats didn't get forgotten in that amazing food drive. So, but thank you for all of the work that you put into that. And I do have a question regarding, I did remember the email that we received regarding the difference between the cold and extreme weather. What I, guess I'm hearing, though, is that maybe some staff, you know, in the interactions with residents who are trying to figure out where they can go, or, you know, staff was maybe guiding them to Denver or somewhere else outside of Adams and Jeff Co., where we, you know, have partnerships. And it seems like there's still some cracks that people fall through, and it sounds, you know, in the description that you had, it was in the email that it had to be a sort of a strong relationship with Adams, it had to be registered and everything in order to get service. And so, you know, how quickly does that happen? Are we able to react that quickly to help send them over and to get services? Or again, is there some, you know, hole that people fall through, and then they end up having to go to Denver? So I think that's, that would be helpful to just better understand. And then I, regarding the rental property committee, I remember, you know, Mr. Russell had come in talking about the challenges of a smaller property owner in relation to some of our landscape and other requirements. And perhaps there were code updates that could be made to accommodate for smaller-scale rental projects or rental developments. And really, that's like a three, you know, three or fourplex or something like that versus 200, 300 apartments. It sounds like we may have some good representation on the larger-scale side, and that's just a different economy of scale than the smaller property owners. And so I'd still be interested in just better understanding what has come out of the conversations with Mr. Russell and other smaller-scale property owners. Maybe there's some input that the staff can provide, or a summary of input that has been received. Certainly, I would think that during, as we consider the IPMC, the Property Maintenance Code, that we would be able to also have some summary of stakeholder input on that. I know it's pretty, you don't really want to change an international recommended code too significantly, but I think that, you know, there's maybe something that we could be looking at, or I'd like to better understand, because I think those smaller-scale rental properties are often, you know, are, they're not, you know, deed-restricted, affordable, but they are kind of naturally occurring, affordable developments in the, in the, in the city. So I want to be able to maintain those and, yeah, just be responsive. So I would love to, I don't want to create a ton of work for staff, but just having a better understanding of what the asks were would be, would be helpful. Thank you.
May I speak briefly? Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Two points of clarification. Community Services Director has asked to clarify that by next, she meant December 17th, so it's actually next Wednesday at 4:00 PM. So I want to make sure you didn't come here at City Hall this Wednesday. It's next Wednesday, the 17th, at 4:00 PM, right here at City Hall in the Colorado River Room. And Mayor Protem will get that included in our work back in terms of what has been the input for smaller-scale multifamily buildings and how that's been considered in what we bring forward to, to city council. I do want to reiterate that Mr. Russell does have a very strong voice at the table and does represent very, very well the interests of small building owners. So I just want to assure the council that that input is very seriously taken.
Thank you. Councillor Hott?
Yes. So speaking of, Mr. Russell, I would love, if you would reach out to me, I would love to speak with you one-on-one, because I really want to understand how you think this could be a better committee. We are going into strategic planning in the beginning of the year, so that would be a good time to talk about any restructuring, if that's something that council would like to do. But I want to make sure that I, I understand exactly what you're looking for and what exactly is making you unhappy right now. So I would really like to have a one-on-one meeting with you by the end of the month, or definitely before strategic planning, so that way I have a very, very clear understanding of what you're asking for. And then I do have some questions for staff related to the, the warming center and the vouchers. So what happens on weekends or holidays when the, the weather drops? Do we still respond, even if it's during weekend and holidays and if City Hall is not
We'll get you additional information on that. What happens currently is, is as we are anticipating of weather coming in, they're, they are activating prior to the weekends to reach out to those in the community, to get them the vouchers, to connect with them, and to get them resources. Obviously, if something happens over the weekend, we also work with the rangers and the police department and firefighters, they have gear that they can also help provide and give them resources, help at least try to connect them to the appropriate resources.
Okay. And then as far as our warming center goes, when I had asked about it prior, which was a long time ago, when we were first talking about this, the reason why we went with the vouchers was because it was more affordable. But I am concerned who is able to get them and who is able to know about them. Not every unhoused person has a phone and is able to call the city or even able to call 211. They may not know about it, whereas the MAC being there all the time, that's, it would make sense that that would be the first place that somebody would go. And so what I was told is that the very first, every time it opens, that first night is over $10,000 just to operate, just to get it started that first night every single time. And so it was a, a cost issue as to why that remained at zero degrees. What I would like to see is, I would like to see basically a graph of how many days it's open and how much it costs at zero, how much it would be if we raised it, you know, five degrees, 10 degrees, 15 degrees, all the way up to 30 degrees, and see the different cost difference. Because I understand if maybe we don't have the money to raise it to 30 degrees, but there must be some sort of middle ground as we work towards that, you know, 32-degree threshold. So if we could see the, the different costs and see where we might be able to make, you know, raise it, I understand what, what staff is saying about 32, but it doesn't mean that we can't raise it, you know, something, as we, you know, hopefully can get to 32 at some point. Because for folks who don't have phones, for folks who aren't going to get the alerts, for folks who may not even have access to finding out what the weather's going to be like over the next few days, to even know that they should be seeking out these vouchers, they need a place to go. And so if we could look at where we might be able to make some headway towards 32 degrees, even if we can't make it to 32 degrees, what can we raise it to so that way it's not stuck at zero? So if we could look at the different costs at the, those different points of weather to see if we might be able to activate it at a higher temperature, that would be fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is my first opportunity to really speak in front of you all, and I just wanted to express, first of all, gratitude to the mayor and fellow councillors who have really done a wonderful job bringing me onto this council and prepared to do this, to this work. All of them have provided me a great deal of mentorship and support, and it's wonderful to have a council that's willing to do that. I also want to appreciate all the city staff, City Manager Andrews and the rest of the staff who also did an excellent job in helping prepare me for this role, and I know that they will do the same for our newly appointed councillor here in a week. So I really wanted to express that appreciation. I also, being sworn in and moving into the meeting last week, didn't get an opportunity to just acknowledge someone who I got to work very close with the last, the last several years in my career, Senator Winter. She was really a champion for our community. It was an incredible privilege to get to work with her every single day and to see what she was able to do, not only for this community, for the state. There are many accomplishments that I would not have been able to achieve if it wasn't for her and her work. And so to show appreciation for her and also to, you know, express that as a city, we are, we are working to honor her through Councillor Azadi's motion at the last meeting that we will carry over this year, and some of the other work that was discussed in the pre-meeting session. So I look forward to continuing to honor her work through our work and appreciate you all being here.
Thank you so much. With that, I want to say thank you to our speakers, and again, a big thank you to our Dog Park Guardians. Thank you for sending over that news article that Denver Seven had covered, the incredible amount of food that you'd raised. I just, you, this community that the Dog Park Guardians have raised continues to blow my mind, really, with how much of a difference you can make and continue to make, and you just keep growing and reaching further into the community with your engagement. So thank you for all that work that you're doing there. You are moving mountains. And I hate to pile on for a couple of these questions and items that we've already asked about, but I just want to help us get to clarity. So for, for Mr. Craig Russell on his items, can, and, and I know that Director Kimball was just up here, but can you help me understand the difference between the advisory board that Mr. Russell is recommending and the meetings that are happening right now? What is that difference? And I'll pause there.
Lindsay Kimball, Community Services Director. Thank you, Mayor Carmelia, for the question. To answer your question, they're very similar. In 2024, there was a group of invitees that represented different landlords of different sizes of, of rental units, everything from fourplex to the big guys. When we inherited the program, we looked at it and said, wow, there's not representation. And we heard this from, from UNI very early on. Last year, it was about March, February timeframe. And they came to this body and expressed concerns about the program and how can we get involved? And, you know, just kind of inheriting that program right then, and the timing, said, wow, that's, that's a great point. There you have no representation on this committee. So we actually expanded the representation of who was part of that committee. We made it unlimited. There, it's not an exclusive members-only group. It's anyone who has a vested interest, anyone in the city, or even not a resident, you know, who is concerned about rental housing from a tenant perspective, from a landlord perspective, big, small, everything in between. Again, everyone's welcome. So this is not exclusive. And what we feel we did was we made it more accessible. We responded to the request from UNI to have representation and have tenants actually represented in the process. So we feel that we expanded the representation and the input.
Thank you so much. And what's the name of this advisory committee?
It's called the Rental Housing Ad Hoc Committee.
Okay. And as you said, everyone is welcome. And are these public? Are they on our website?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you so much. Okay, and then, again, I hate to pile on further discussion on this one, but our cold and extreme weather response, you know, I just want to say thank you because staff has worked extremely hard on, a lot of work on this issue within the past several months and as well as the past two years. And I also realize that with our joining the IGA with Jefferson County, that it adds additional complexity. And so, you know, my request to you to clarify the process, I'm really grateful for all the information we got. I think the needed goal here is to clarify it for the community. And so with the enormous amount of information that was in there in that response, in that email, if we can somehow get that, is it, first of all, ask, is it on the website? I was just looking myself, trying to find it. And if it is, if you could just help us out, know where it is so that I can easily share that link, and then if we can get that information somehow, again, I know it's ambiguous and large, but if we can somehow clarify, what is our response, when do we activate? And then it'll make it easier for us to take action from there, because, you know, I know that I was the one who, you know, initially raised the question of, you know, raising our response from zero to 32. It is the humane thing to do. I also realize that there are budget constraints, and so I appreciate Councillor Hott's question about, you know, can we take a look at, at further responses? And then how does that fit and correlate into the IGA's response? Because we need to make sure that we're not necessarily doing the same thing, but that it, you know, makes sense within the standards of, of our agreement. So thank you. I know that there's a lot of work to come on that. Thank you.
Mayor, thank you. I will note, we do have a web page, website for this, and because this wasn't agendaed for this evening, I don't have the staff team here that leads this program. They would be really able to provide much better answers than I can this evening and clarifications, but do know that we do have a dedicated team of navigators and coresponders that work directly with the community, and they are active all the time when they're needed, those services. So I just want to assure the community to not leave the wrong impression. We just don't have that team here. We just don't have that team here tonight.
Understood. Thank you. Okay. I just want to see if there's anything else. That is all I had. And I've made a few comments before, but I can't help but make one more comment to the community to just say that I too was heartbroken at the loss of Senator Faith Winter. And I know that our city as a whole feels indebted to her years of service. And so I think that we will have more ideas forthcoming on how we best honor her. With that, there are no items on the consent agenda this evening. And then, moving on, there are no appointments or resignations this evening. There are no public hearings this evening. And so that brings us to new business. Do I have a motion on the first reading of Counselors Bill 54? Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I moved a pass Counselors Bill Number 54 on first reading to amend Title 11 of the Westminster Municipal Code Regarding Electric Vehicle Charging Stations.
Thank you. Mayor Protamnaramella?
A second.
Thank you. And may I get a, any discussion? Okay.
Mayor Carmelia?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counselor Hot?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
And Mayor Protamnaramella?
Yes.
The motion passes on a six-zero vote.
Thank you so much. The next new business item is the selection of the city council appointment interviewees. City Clerk, do you have a presentation on applications and next steps for the city council appointment?
Yes, but I would like to defer to the city attorney to start the discussion.
Thank you, Clerk Fitch. Dave Frankel, city attorney. I just wanted to talk about the procedural situation before city council this evening. As a result of then-Counselor Carmelia's election to the mayor position and the swearing-in of now-Mayor Carmelia on December 1st, that did create a vacancy. So it's the last two years of former Counselor Carmelia's seat. So the charter addresses this situation by stating at Section 5.7, "Filling vacancies in elective offices, that any vacancy which occurs in the council shall be filled within 30 days by a majority vote of the remaining members of the council, said appointee to hold office for any balance of the unexpired term." So in this situation, there's a vacancy for two years. And the appointment that is city councils to make would be to choose the person to serve the remainder of that two-year term. And Council Rules and Regulations 7.23 address sort of the process that city council has in place for going about that appointment. And it states that vacant positions on the council shall be appointed by council from applicants who have completed the appropriate application form and interview process. Appointments shall be by roll-call vote, and a majority vote is necessary to finalize an appointment. If no single applicant obtains the majority vote after the first roll-call, all persons receiving no votes will be removed from consideration, and the process will be repeated after each vote until a majority vote is received by one applicant. And after five roll-call votes with no one person being appointed, the council will consider all candidates again and begin the process of elimination of candidate names after every five votes. So 7.23 has a little bit more than is before council tonight because tonight, really, it's the consideration of this application form and interview process and what are your next steps. But the remainder of 723 will address the voting that would occur once you've had your interviews of your applicants. So I just wanted to present that just to give some context as to where we are tonight in light of the vacancy of now-Mayor Carmelia's former council seat. And I'll pass it to Clerk Fitch for further discussion.
Thank you. Abby Fitch, city clerk. So before you this evening, we are going to discuss how to choose finalists and next steps. Staff has laid out before you a recommended procedure that we would like to discuss. I'll give you a high-level overview of that procedure and then ask for your feedback. So we would offer that each council member would choose an individual to be interviewed, and they would name one finalist and do this, take turns doing this, and do this two rounds. So council would each choose two candidates. As mentioned earlier, we have a block of time set aside starting on Friday at 5:00 p.m. And if, that's when all the candidate interviews would begin. We would try to complete the interviews on Friday night so we can keep a clean schedule. And we would allow each interview for 20 minutes with a five-minute warning time before we end the time. Also, a five-minute time for transition between candidates. The time would be strictly adhered to so we can keep things moving at a good pace. Council members will be able to submit up to two questions to me. So then I would distribute those to all of councils. So those would be the questions asked during the interview. And like I said, the time will be strictly adhered to with minor adjustments made necessary if there needs to be some sort of fairness or something addressed. Candidates will only respond to the questions asked and avoid just going off on unrelated topics. And then Saturday, proposed is Saturday, December 13th at 10:30 a.m. City Council meeting, a special city council meeting would be held. The list of 12 finalists will be presented for voting. The voting will occur via roll-call, much like we do the roll-call votes now. It would start with the first counselor on the list, which is actually the mayor. And then the next time, it would go to the next person, just like we do roll-call votes. The first candidate who got four votes would be the appointee. And if we made it through, if there was no person in the first round who got four votes, we would eliminate the candidates who got zero votes. And this is what the city attorney described. After five rounds of eliminating people who do not have any votes, all the candidates would be put back in for consideration. That is a high-level overview. I would like to take questions and feedback and any adjustments council would like to see.
Thank you so much. Counselor Hot?
Yes. So this schedule is a little bit different than what we had originally discussed. If my memory serves me correctly, the reason why we added Friday was just in case we had, you know, 30, 40, 50 people who put in applications and we wouldn't have enough time to interview them in one day. But we didn't, we have under 20 people who put in applications. So I would like to do everything on Saturday. We can do everything in one day. I think that makes much more sense than coming in on a Friday and then coming back in on Saturday. Since we're going to be here on Saturday, I think we could start as early as 8:00 a.m. And we could do all of the interviews, and then we could do the voting at the end. But my understanding was Friday was a just-in-case day. And I think it would make much more sense if we did everything in one day. And that's my feedback.
I'll pause there for further discussion on that note. I believe it was similar but opposite. I thought Friday was mandatory and Saturday was if needed. But either way, personally, I'm neutral on how this goes. So thoughts from other folks on council, yea or nay on doing this all on Saturday?
Are we going to have enough time? That's what I want to know.
If we narrow down the field, we would have enough time. So depending on the number of candidates that the city council would like to interview, we could do it all in one day.
Well, I think 12 is good because I don't want people to feel like it was a waste of their time to apply and we don't care to hear from them. So I thought that was a good number. I don't know what everyone else's feeling is, but they took their time to do it, and then we only picked six. I think that's disenfranchising, so.
Counselor Azadi?
Thank you. I have a proposal based off of this proposal and Counselor Hot's suggestion and the concept of disenfranchisement. So as someone with a child, I think it's actually more inequitable to have a Friday night thing after people have to go to work. They have to then come, you know, prepare an interview on a Friday night. It's not good for families. So I would suggest the Saturday being the one day, having it all in one day. And I think we should actually give more time to each person because they did take a lot of time to go through this and apply. And to bring in 12, I think, is not only a very long day for a lot of people, especially not knowing if some will go five minutes. You know, some people speak really quickly, some will go to full 20, et cetera. I think we actually filter it down to six people so that we respect everyone's time. We do it Saturday morning, three hours, 30 minutes each person. So rather than 20 minutes, we actually go deeper because we have had two weeks with these applications. And I've read them all twice. You know, these are, it's a really good list of people that we have, these 20 folks. So I don't think we need to waste everyone's time to have too many people come in. I think we can pick six, one person. Each counselor picks one, and we interview them over three hours. And then we can spend an hour together as a council to basically not vote, but bounce back pros and cons of the interviews. We can spend that final fourth hour, and then we have a 1:00 p.m. vote. So we do a 30-minute group sesh of pros and cons, what we think. And then we have a 1:00 p.m. special meeting vote so that it's all done in a tight period of time, and we give more candidates more time.
Thank you. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I think that it is, I agree with Counselor Azadi and Counselor Hot that Saturday starting early is probably a little bit easier on a lot of folks, especially given that it's already Monday night. And, you know, if we're going to begin to notify people tonight that they've been selected for an interview, giving them the opportunity to go through the work week and then come on Saturday is probably more appropriate. I did have another question, but if we want to finish this topic of scheduling, I can reserve my question, it's probably for the city attorney afterwards.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Protamnaramella?
I'm pretty flexible with how we go about this. You know, I'm deferring to staff too because they have to be here at certain times. And, you know, so I'm open to whatever works best for everybody. I would say if we could not come in at 8:00 a.m., but maybe 9:00 a.m. on Saturday, be kinder. But, you know, I could get behind like a nine-to-one or, you know, something like that on Saturday. I'm intrigued by the longer timeframe that Counselor Azadi mentioned. If we can pick six that we all agree on, I mean, you know, maybe that could work. But I'm also open to doing, you know, 20-minute interviews. Maybe we do a few more to Counselor Ireland's point of...
Well, I think that people are one thing on paper, they're different in person. So if you only give six a chance to talk to us in person, I don't think that's fair to all those that apply. So I'm fine with coming earlier on Saturday, but I still think it should be 12.
Okay, I'm going to answer one question at a time. So I hear a majority for an all-day meeting on Saturday. Is that correct? Any notes to that?
Half-day, not all-day.
Yeah. Okay. As short as possible, one session Saturday. Sounds good. Okay. And then we'll answer the second question, which is, how many people does each counselor select? Whether that's one or two, which is the second question. And I'll give my feedback before we go back. One more round is, I agree with Counselor Ireland. I believe that we will allow for more participants to hear. Wait, I'll say this first. I am blown away by the candidate pool. There is an incredible candidate pool. And I just think it's really an unbelievable opportunity for our council to give these folks the chance to present themselves. And I think that any one of many of them could be an excellent addition. And so I just want to note that. But personally, I am for the shorter time, 20 minutes, so that we give more people a chance to present themselves and offer them the opportunity to be heard. With that, other voices?
Mayor, may I just give council a little bit of what that time looks like just so you can keep that in mind as you make your decision? If you interview 12 people at 30 minutes, at 30 minutes an interview, that is six hours worth of interviews. And then if you are interviewing 12 people, and that's six hours without any transition times or breaks. If you interview 12 people at 20 minutes an interview, that's four hours. Staff is agnostic, we'll be here no matter what. But I just want council to understand what they're facing.
Thank you so much. And personally, I am willing to give a full eight-hour day to this. I'd also suggest, my personal suggestion would be, you know, each counselor gets to choose two names and then shorten it to 15 minutes so that we get to hear from more people. Any other voices?
I do have a question about, so if we each had two and then we ended up, some of us with crossover, I can imagine, that's what happened. So, I mean, if we end up with 10, you know, I still, I think we ought to just try it out, see what our two are, and then we might end, maybe we figure out from there how long we'd want to make the sessions.
Counselor Azadi?
I think that's a good point. We don't really know if it's 12 unique candidates versus 12 choices. So we should try it out and see. But from the standpoint of 15 minutes, I'm not okay with just seeing someone. That's too fast, it's not respecting people's time. You know, if you have kids, it takes a lot of time to schedule a block, to prepare, and then you come in for 10, 15 minutes, that's not worth, you know, that's not worth their time.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Hot?
Yes, I just want to say that I agree with Mayor Protam's suggestion.
Thank you. And Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think maybe now is an appropriate time to ask my question to the city attorney before we begin to select because I think that's where we're going. I do have a question, two questions related, one related to how we spend a lot of time with each candidate. The proposal outlines a select set of questions for each candidate. And, you know, one of the things that I would like to see is having the ability to ask dynamic questions because each candidate has a different background. Each candidate answered their questions differently. And so when I was reading through the applicants, you know, one applicant, I had one question for, another applicant, I had another question for. And I think by tying our hands, I would much rather have council have the ability to ask questions that they see are appropriate to the candidate rather than being stuck to pre-submitted questions. Because if I wanted a pre-submitted question, I would have just put it in the application.
Thank you, Counselor. I think part of the answer likely will come from the clerk. But I think that there's a desire for a uniform process that is applied to each of our candidates. And I think that's part of the reason the proposal includes each council member having the opportunity to propose two questions that they would like to put to the candidates. And I think that having a uniform set of questions can provide some benefit. I agree, you wouldn't have the same opportunity to fine-tune it and dynamically investigate their responses. But it's also intended, I think, to manage time. Because whether it's 15, 20, or 30 minutes for each candidate, if there are proposed 12 questions, there may not be a lot of... questions, there may not be a lot of extra time for the inquiry that, um, ideally you would undertake if you had more than 30 minutes per person. Uh, but I would ask the, the clerk, I hopefully haven't got it too wrong from, from her perspective.
No, I think this, the attorney has mostly summed it up well. There's, there's the idea that we're just trying to treat all the candidates the same way, so they all get a fair shot. And it, you know, managing time could be difficult if the questions vary.
Can I add real quick to that? I actually asked this question to the city manager beforehand. And the follow-up, we'll have follow-up questions. So you'll have the standard questions, but we'll get the opportunity to have follow-up questions, which could be custom. So.
Before I move on to, uh, Counselor Ireland, to clarify for what Counselor Zadi just said. So does that mean that our first question is standard and our second question would be a follow, uh, no? Okay.
Two looks standard, but you can follow up on the answer.
Thank you.
Yes, that's correct. Okay, thank you. Counselor Ireland?
I would just suggest that we start at eight, even though that sounds early. Just so we're done by noon with the interviews. So we have a lunch break and we can talk for an hour and then do the rest.
Okay, so before we choose a time of the day, I want to make sure that we've answered our second question, which is, um, how many people that we are each selecting. I believe I heard a majority, but I'm going to pause to let anyone who still would like to select only one candidate to respond now. Okay, fantastic. So that answers our second question that we will each select two. And then, uh, as far as the timing for Saturday morning, um, it sounds like it's between 8:00 AM and 9:00 AM. Um, I will remain neutral here. I'm not a morning person, but I'll do what it takes. All right, go ahead. Counselor Haath?
Um, I just want to say that I think it would be, um, a good, um, to decide the time after. Um, we know how many candidates we have, so we know how long it's going to take. And so, um, that way we know of eight or nine is more appropriate.
That's fair. Any arguments there? Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I am agnostic. I will wake up as early as you asked me to be here. However, if I am late for the firefighters, um, who are graciously taking me along, uh, this, that afternoon, um, I will ask that you explain that to them.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, are there any other questions from staff we need to answer before we go into candidate selection?
Thanks, Mayor. If I could, um, I just wanted to address two issues that have come to light. Um, first, eligibility. So I think we had 20 applicants, um, but I wanted to explain, um, that one of them, there's a notation on the chart, uh, as to being currently a resident of a different city. And unfortunately, uh, that makes that person ineligible to hold the office of city councilor. So I wanted to be sure people understood, um, before they nominated for, um, this finalist list, um, that eligibility is premised on, uh, having, well, residents here in Westminster. So, um, a Denver resident would not be eligible, for example.
Quick question. Just to cross T's and dot I's, that person was contacted and confirmed that they don't live in Westminster? Because, you know, sometimes addresses can say things and...
Yes, we, we confirmed with our GIS system and I also emailed the individual.
And they replied?
Yes, they replied.
Thank you. Just a second.
Thank you so much for that. And...
And there was one other issue I just wanted to...
Yes, I know you have one more. I just want to, is this pressing?
Yeah, you got first.
Okay, I just want to make sure I get these questions in the right order. So, okay, thank you, Counselor Attorney. All right, city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the other, uh, not, not an eligibility criteria, but more of a viability criteria. Um, I've shared with city council, um, a copy of Charter 512-1, um, which is, um, a requirement in our city charter that addresses conflicts of interest. And if there were any questions as to how 512-1 applies, um, I wanted to give council a chance to ask any questions that you had, um, and offer, if you'd prefer to do that in an executive session for legal advice, we can absolutely do that, uh, because it does involve legal interpretation of the charter. Um, so if, if there are questions about how 512-1 affects conflicts of interest, um, I wanted to offer that opportunity to council before, uh, names were proposed for the finalist list.
Thank you. Any questions on that? Okay. With that, any further, uh, questions from council? Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And sorry to, to maybe come back to this question, but, um, given what Counselor Zadi had confirmed about the opportunity for council to ask, um, follow-up questions, um, and I know we have not decided the, the exact timeframe at which we're going to, how many minutes we're going to give each candidate, because we will wait to determine, um, that after we know how many candidates we have. Um, I wanted to discuss the viability or the opportunity of portioning the time among counselors, because I think certain follow-up questions can be lengthy and our individual questions can be lengthy. Um, and I don't want my questions to eat into any other counselor's opportunity to be asking their questions, because I think all of us have important questions to ask. And so maybe a rule, setting a rule amongst ourselves that says that, for example, if we're allowing each counselor to have, um, or, you know, we have 12 nominations and we want this to last 20 minutes, that each counselor gets, um, you know, there are three minutes and 25 seconds to ask both of their questions and any subsequent follow-up questions so that we make sure that each counselor gets an equitable opportunity to engage with the, the candidate.
I appreciate you bringing that question to light. A, uh, possible solution, and of course, staff, I'm welcome to hear your thoughts, but are we planning to use this stop timer here? And can we change the time and divide it accordingly?
Um, there are some limitations to this timer, but, um, we, we can figure out how to, I, I mean, I have another clock that I had planned to use. The clock that I had planned to use does not allow you to divide time, but we can figure it out.
I'm thinking perhaps the clock starts not when the candidate starts their response, but perhaps it starts at each counselor's question. Uh, and then, you know, it stops, you know, the candidate's response stops so that we give equal, equal time to each coun- can, uh, counselor. If that makes sense.
Yes. Um, just be mindful that that will add time to the overall time if we stop during counselors' questions.
Not stopping, just as a whole, right? Let's say each counselor gets three minutes, right, for their, uh, candidate to respond. And it's just inclusive of the question and the response.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yes. Yeah, we can figure that out. Right. Counselor Zadi?
So my, my assumption with the, a 20-minute or 30-minute timeframe for each person is that no matter what, so if you ask your two standard questions to the candidate and it's 19 minutes that gone by, the counselors need to know that they have one minute to ask their question and get a response. So they probably won't ask, so it's a hard stop. Meaning, even if you're in the, once the 20 minutes is up, we should stop.
Agreed.
So I don't think you need to track the individual. It doesn't matter as long as you're within, because if a candidate takes five minutes to answer questions, to answer the two questions and they have 15 minutes left, then the council should know that there's another 15 minutes left and they can ask as many as they want. But if they don't have any time left, then they can't ask any. Because it should just be stopped, you know, locked, no matter what. That's how I assume the 20 minutes work. Is that accurate?
Um, I was just basing this on past process and yes, that's correct. In the past, um, but the, the questions have been asked and whatever is, whatever happens in that 20 minutes happens. For example, if you get through two questions, that's what you get through. Uh, some people finish, have in the past have finished early and then other people have gotten, not gotten through all the questions.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Ireland?
Well, if we did it like we do at city council, you ask the question, then the time goes for three minutes. That's 18 minutes. That's almost perfect. It's almost 20 minutes. But everyone gets to ask their question.
I personally, always my opinion, I agree. So hopefully we can use that or something like it that helps solve the issue. Um, and Mayor Protem?
I do a lot of interviewing and I would just say, um, if you can give the person ahead of time, hey, we have 12 questions, um, 20 minutes, keep your answers concise. Um, that's up to them to keep their answers concise and to be able to make room for our questions. But maybe I'm a little bit of a hard interviewer.
Uh, Counselor Haath?
I agree with Mayor Protem.
Perfect. Okay. Does that give us enough information to move forward?
I believe so. I might just need some clarifications. So, um, does council want to ask their questions and then the time starts? Or did, having the time stop between each answer and then the next question? Or are we letting the 20 minutes run in its entirety?
Counselor Zadi?
I, I just don't want a counselor talking for more than five seconds, right? If we're asking a super long question, then that's taken away from the, so I don't like this micromanaging of each piece. I think you just, you just time box it, 20 minutes. And if you don't have time, then you don't have time. So we shouldn't allow a counselor to take up all the time with the super long questions.
Counselor Ireland?
Well, my thoughts, we really have one question each, so that's three minutes, you know? We each reduce it to one, so there are six questions, because that's three minutes each they have to answer them. Because I'm just feeling like maybe the same counselor will get to ask a question every time. Are we going to switch it up? I mean, or do we start with the first question again with every person and then the others don't get to ask a question? That's my problem with the way we're doing it right now.
So where are we? Before we go next, um, my, I was going to counter what Counselor Ireland just, uh, said with a suggestion that each counselor, a different counselor starts each time, just like we do with our yes votes, just to keep that cycle going. Uh, right. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I, I totally agree with Counselor Zadi's questions. Um, I would prefer that, um, we ask the questions off of the recorded time or pause the recorded time so that in the event that any counselor is long-winded with their question, it is not counted against the applicant's ability to, to move forward.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Uh, do I have, maybe we can take this to a vote as to which way we do it so that we can answer city clerk's question? Does that make...
Just one more comment. Um, the only issue with that is if you do have a long-winded counselor talking for so long, it impedes the next person, right? We should, we should be succinct and concise and not give the freedom to counselors. So pausing, it lengthens the whole time. If someone wants to take a diatribe is the problem.
Thank you. I am going to propose we make a motion for one or the other. And so do I have someone willing to make a motion that we, uh, use the, that we stop the clock for each question? Or, go ahead. Counselor Haath?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we, um, don't stop the clock, that we give everybody the same amount of time, whether we choose 20 minutes or 30 minutes, and that each counselor, um, needs to be succinct with their questions. I know I have two questions ready. It would take me less than five minutes, or five seconds to ask, you know, either of the questions that I have prepared. So, um, I, I don't, I, I don't foresee anyone having any question that would take five minutes to ask. Um, I think, you know, we as counselors need to be respectful of their time. Oh, I, 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 sorry. This is not a discussion, this is a motion. I would like to make a motion that we, um, just stick with 20 or 30 minutes, whatever we decide, and that's, that's what we do.
Thank you so much. Uh, Mayor Protem Nermella?
I'll second that.
Excellent. Uh, city clerk, can we call upon folks to make a vote?
Yes. Counselor Zadi?
Yes.
Counselor Haath?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
And, uh, Mayor Protem Nermella?
Yes.
And Mayor Carmelia?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes on a six-zero vote.
Lovely. Okay. Anything else we need to cover before we move on? Yes, Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I have, I have another question for staff related to, um, the finalists that are selected and the order and procedure in which they will be brought up for a vote. Um, because right now, the process that we have just says we'll just start voting on them. Um, but I think that, um, you know, I would really like some clarity on, um, who we vote on first and how that is selected and how we move through the process of whoever the nominees are, um, to ensure that that process is equitable and also that, I think, I would like to see council have some input on that process as we go through this.
I'm a little unclear. Do you mean the list of nominees or do you mean the final vote for the appointee?
Um, the final vote for the appointee that we take.
Oh, I see. Okay. Um, the, at this point, the, it would just, what was proposed is you would just go down the line and during the roll call vote, um, the counselor would just announce who they were voting for that round. Yeah, yeah.
If I could add, the proposal is to have council vote on the pool such that, you know, as you are asked for your vote, you would identify your candidate. And it is not going to be a separate motion for each person in the pool, so much as there's just an opportunity for everyone to vote on the pool. That way you'll see who has the most support, you'll see who has zero votes. And if there's no majority on the first round, the zero vote-getters are dropped out. And then the next vote would be on the remaining pool. Okay? And the pool only resets after five. If you're unsuccessful in getting a majority within five, then you open up the pool to all of your finalists and you start over again. So, so yeah, the, the motion, um, when, when we researched this, the June of '21 procedures that were utilized, uh, involved essentially opening up the, the pool for a vote. And then that's how the roll calls were, were done. So, if that helps.
Thank you for that clarification. Any further questions?
So do we pick a different counselor each time to vote first? Or is it all, I want to make sure the same person doesn't go first every time?
Yes, it would be run just like a regular roll call vote on the, like a normal council meeting.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, I believe that that brings us then, it sounds, uh, to our selection of our candidates for interview. And so, uh, city clerk Fitch, if you could, uh, one more time, just reiterate that process. I believe, um, that we'll be going down the line twice.
That's correct. I'm going to start with the next person who would be in the roll call vote tonight, which would be Counselor Zadi. We'll go down the line and then the next, then the second time around, I'll go through the roll call again as it would stand in, in normal procedure, which would mean that Haath would lead and you would all pick one individual each round.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Okay, with that, we will begin our process of selection of candidates for interview. And again, I just want to say thank you to everyone who applied because this is, um, a very big job. And, um, we appreciate your commitment to the city. Uh, with that, city clerk?
Counselor Zadi?
This was a hard choice. Um, just want to state that for the record because there are a lot of great people here. Um, but I did receive a ton of community support, uh, for, well, for several candidates, but for this person, she got a lot. And then my selection is Cat Moline.
Counselor Haath?
Yes, uh, my first selection is Jessica Johnson.
Counselor Ireland?
Ethy Strode.
Counselor Johnson?
Adam Edward Brass.
Adam Edward Brahas.
Mayor Protam-Nerella?
Tracy Yang.
And Mayor Carmelia?
Parker Brown.
Counselor Ha, may I have your second individual?
Yes, I have down Kat Mullein as well.
Okay. Counselor Ireland?
Tracy.
Counselor Johnson?
Philip Romero.
Mayor Protam-Nerella?
My second was Parker Brown.
Mayor Carmelia?
Tracy Yang.
And Counselor Azadi?
Jessica Pollard.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, Jessica?
Pollard, P-O-L-L-A-R-D.
Oh, there, sorry.
I got my Jessica confused. That's who I meant to write down on my, I'm sorry. I just realized that. I, it didn't dawn on me when I was writing them. I saw the Jessica and when I was writing it down, so I actually would like to change that to Jess, because that's who I meant when I wrote them down earlier.
Okay, I would like to read back this list to confirm that I captured everybody's choices. Give me one second. Kat Mullein, Jessica Pollard, Kathy Stroud, Adam Brahas, Lo Tracy Yang, Parker Brown, and Philip Romero. Am I missing anyone?
I have seven people. Can you repeat it again? Sorry.
Kat Mullein, Jessica Pollard, Kathy Stroud, Adam Brahas, Tracy Yang, Parker Brown, and Philip Romero.
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I will find my place in the agenda.
Mayor, may I ask a question of the clerk? We have a live inquiry from someone who's watching livestream, asking if the proceedings on Saturday will be livestreamed then?
Yes, they will. It'll be streamed just like a regular meeting.
Perfect. Okay, so in that case, we have a couple more items to cover, which is our starting time. It sounds like our candidate pool is six, is that correct? Seven, sorry. Okay, seven. I know we're all about to do some quick math. All right, with that, I will make a suggestion, and then pause and allow anyone here to make a motion, but seeing as we have seven, that if we did the maximum allotted time suggested tonight, which is 30 minutes, that would bring us to three and a half hours of interviewee time. And based on our prior discussion, I think that that amount of time is amenable to everyone, but I will pause and see if I hear different. Mayor Protam?
I propose, starting at 8:30, and 30-minute interviews.
Counselor Johnson?
I second that proposal.
Excellent. Thank you so much. City Clerk? If you could.
Okay. Counselor Ha? I guess are we taking a formal vote on this?
I think that's the easiest method, yes.
Counselor Ha?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
Thank you.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Protam-Nerella?
Yes.
Mayor Carmelia?
Yes.
And Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Okay. That passed on a 6-0.
Brilliant. Thank you. Thank you all so much. So that was no easy feat to figure out a process. We are constructing the plane as we're flying, so thank you all. I just want to pause before we go further. Staff, are there any, any other additional questions we need to clarify for Saturday?
Yes, we have some other time things that we need clarity on. The, so that is, that brings us to roughly three and a half hours for the interviews, so we need some built-in transition time and breaks in there. So, starting at 8:30, they say we can end at 12, 12:30. And then to have the vote, I think that we need to have a separate, clean time, so the public knows when that portion of the meeting will start. And I imagine that Council will want to eat at least a snack. So first, I want to ask if you're amenable to going from 8:30 to 12:30.
Do we want to do a poll on that, or? Okay, general, let's do a hand vote, real quick.
Yes, 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 yes.
You've got everyone.
And then I would propose a half-hour lunch and a 1 o'clock start time for the voting portion of the meeting.
Perfect.
Can I add on to that, real quick? Does Council want to have that group sort of thing, huddle, maybe working lunch, the thirty minutes where we do the bouncing of the pros and cons, or no?
All right, I will call, just to make sure everyone can hear individuals, City Attorney?
Just a process offer, an offer. If Council wants to deliberate on the result of all of the interviews, you can. I don't know that you have to. But if we were to agendize a 1 o'clock start for the special meeting in the afternoon, I think you could start your deliberations at 1 o'clock on the record in the open meeting, and then go into the vote when you are ready. That's just how I would suggest it might roll out.
I think that's fair.
Okay, let's do another hand vote on this process. Do we want to have deliberations before our vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protam?
Yes, sorry. I was just thinking of, wouldn't we have the opportunity anyway? But if we agendize it, that's fine with me, too.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I guess I'm confused by "before," because either option is "before." So when you say "before," you mean at 1 o'clock?
Correct.
Yes.
Actually, you know, to Mayor Protam's point, I don't, I just want to have the opportunity. I don't care when it happens. I think we can do it at 1. We don't have to have a separate thing. We can do it during our council comments. It's the same thing, so never mind.
Okay, so I think I'm hearing that as long as we each get a chance to voice our reason why we're voting for who we're voting for, which we can do during council comments during each vote, correct? I'm seeing the attorney and city clerk.
So, for the benefit, so this would be a special meeting, and the agenda would be pretty focused. So it could read, I think, deliberation and vote to fill the vacant seat. And that way, people could have an opportunity to voice their positions, deliberate, and then undertake the votes. But it won't be like a standard city council meeting with roll-call, pledge of allegiance, council comment, you know, this is a very focused meeting, so I think the agenda is really going to be very limited. It'll probably just say, deliberate and vote on filling the vacancy.
Understood. Any questions? Okay. I think that we are all in agreement then on the timing and the process. Thank you for helping us get there. Anything else, City Clerk?
The only other thing I would add is that in order to best utilize the candidate's time, I will offer them slots to sign up for, letting them know that they must show up early, so they, you know, they're ready beforehand. Is there anybody who objects to that? Okay, that's, that's all I wanted to add.
Thank you so much. Anything further for Saturday from Council or staff? Mayor Protam?
Sorry, I just want to thank Counselor Azadi and Counselor Ha, just for rethinking the timeframe and making sure that it's friendly to our applicants. So I appreciate that.
Agreed. All right, thank you so much. With that, there being no further business, the time is now 8:45 on the dot, and the December 8, 2025 meeting of Westminster City Council is adjourned. Thank you all.